All right, everybody ready? Jump right in.
Yes.
Who said that?
I said yes.
Thanks, all right. Good evening, everybody. I am calling, welcoming everybody to the Cohasset Select Board meeting and I lost my agenda, so I don't know the date off the top of my head. It's Monday, September 21st. It is 6:30 PM. We are in session for the purpose of interviewing three candidates for the two associate positions of the Conservation Commission. And then we will quickly break, we'll stay in session but break and join and have a joint meeting with the Sewer Commission at 7:00 PM. So, welcome, everybody. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Please note that comments on Facebook will not be monitored this evening. The Zoom app can be loaded onto a smartphone, laptop, tablet, or other computer. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to utilize the question and answer feature on Zoom, including typing in their name and address for the public record. The chair will review the questions and direct them to the appropriate participant for a response. This meeting is being recorded as well and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. So, in order to bring the meeting to order, I would like to begin with a roll call.
Jack Creighton here.
Corey Evans here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Okay, and for those who would like to join us to pledge of allegiance.
If you have a flag nearby. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, welcome, everybody. The first thing we're going to do is, we have promoted and I'll ask to have a quick conversation with Jay Pimpari. Jay, thanks for joining us. Jay's the Chair of the CONCOM and I asked him to come tonight and just give us a little kind of overview of the Conservation Commission's role right now and some of the skillsets they might be looking for, so that we can keep those in mind when we talk to the candidates tonight. So, Jay, giving you the floor.
Great, thank you, everyone. Madam Chair and the Select Board, Christina, thanks for the opportunity to meet with you tonight and meet with the prospective candidates as well. CONCOM, formerly known as the Conservation Commission, is comprised of seven full-time voting members. We also have two associate non-voting members. Really, the only difference between the full-time members and the two associate positions is that the two associates are not voting members. They don't vote on the application at the end of the public hearing. However, having said that, they are fully allowed and strongly encouraged to participate in any of our hearings. One of the benefits of being an associate is that you actually gain a full year of experience under your belt before becoming a voting member. Each and every one of our full-time members has at one time served as an associate. So, these associates are not alone. Full-time members serve a three-year term while the associates serve a one-year term. So, these would be one-year terms. CONCOM has instituted term limits whereby no member can actually serve more than two terms or six years. This was put in place about eight or so years ago. So, I think it's actually was a great move done many years ago, so that members are actually termed out. There's always a somewhat of a turnover each and every year. Like many boards, we have a Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and the Treasurer. We have liaisons to other town committees such as the Open Space Committee, Community Preservation, and the Harbor Committee. Our meetings are typically the first and third Thursday of the month. They start about 6:30 PM. I'm not going to lie, they sometimes go till 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. Those are what we call the heavy hitter meetings. But for the most part, they last about an hour and a half, maybe two hours. Our responsibilities are to implement the town wetland rules and regulations and the stormwater bylaws. We are a regulatory body in that we do have the authority to issue fines for non-compliance of our rules and regulations and the bylaws. The fines for violation of wetlands regulations are $300 a day and stormwater violations are $100 per day. I would say that most of our applications, if not all of them, consist of single-family house projects. We do receive some wetland replication projects. Applications for a public hearing are triggered when there's a proposed, when there's proposed work within 100 feet of a wetland. This is a Mass DEP Notice of Intent application that needs to be completed. A wetland being an isolated or vegetated, bordering vegetated wetland, ocean, inner harbor, outer harbor, Straits Pond, James Brook, a river, stream, lake pond, basically any water body, a resource area in Cohasset and driving around there are pretty much one on every corner. I'd say our biggest challenge to CONCOM is when we have projects that are proposed within the 50-foot buffer zone, which has historically been considered a no disturbance zone. In these cases, a variance needs by the commission would need to be granted if the project is deemed rare and unusual. So, that's our biggest obstacle and strongest challenge is when we have those projects that are proposed within the 50-foot buffer zone. They're few and far between, but they are out there. All of our site plans are conducted by engineers. They're submitted at least two weeks in advance. They're uploaded onto what we call a OneDrive for viewing. So, there's plenty of opportunity in advance for the commissioners to familiarize themselves with the site plan. Commissioners are encouraged to do a site visit of any proposed applications. And just to wrap this up, if I were personally looking for the perfect candidate, in my view, it would be someone with some form of an engineering background or a wetland scientist or any form of a scientist, someone with some wetlands and/or water quality experience, somebody that is familiar with our applications, someone that has maybe reviewed or dealt with engineers in the past. Again, on any given Thursday night where they're deliberating with engineers and/or attorneys, we can get into some pretty technical issues. So, we have a lot of very talented people living in this town. It would be great if we could secure some of those who have some real-life experience in their day-to-day jobs to bring that experience forward to the commission so that we could actually soften or lessen the learning curve that we, for applications on the commission that we have in front of us. Anyway, having said all that, the commission would benefit from having any one of the three applicants that are in front of you tonight. I personally spoke with each and every one of them prior to their applications being submitted. I did not know any of them, just for the record. So, but again, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, if you have any questions for the applicants, et cetera.
Great, thank you, Jay, for that. And just so that, just to reiterate kind of the process, we're just going to interview the three candidates tonight. We won't deliberate on their applications. I wanted Jay to kind of give us a baseline to help us think about it and we will make two appointments tomorrow night. So, and then Paul, did you have a question?
To Jay, are there any particular skills that are needed currently on CONCOM? Or are there any skills that you would see in the candidates that are exceptionally useful for CONCOM?
I do see some skills within the candidates. I'll save that for a separate discussion, not in the public eye, if you can hopefully respect that. But I do think we do have two candidates that I would be happy to talk with you further about that have what I have seen with some real-life experience that would be a great benefit to the commission. Again, having some engineering background and/or someone that's dealing with water quality issues would be an extreme benefit to the commission. Again, we're up against, we're reviewing professional engineering plans there. They can be very technical in nature. So, someone that has that real-life experience on a day-to-day basis would be a perfect candidate to the commission, in my view.
Thanks.
Great. Any other questions for Jay? Alrighty, thank you. Chris and Tracy, just because it's the order that we got the applications in our packet, if you could promote Heather up and we'll meet her and converse with her. This is very awkward, actually, when you don't know who's coming your way. Okay, I just put Heather through. There's Heather.
All right.
Hi, Heather, thank you for your application. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too, virtually.
Likewise. So, just if you could give us a little summary of your background and your interest in Conservation Commission and before you even start, just thank you for applying and we need talented people on so many committees in town, so we really appreciate your stepping up.
Absolutely. Thank you again to the Select Board for your time tonight. I appreciate that. So, I moved to Cohasset about 14 months ago now with my husband. And since we've sort of been settled in and getting a feel for the town, I had seen posts over the past probably six months indicating that there were some available positions on various boards throughout town. So, I started to think about what may be of interest to me, what may, you know, be a good fit for my professional background and also interests in general. And I saw that there were a number of positions available on CONCOM. And now's a good time, as any, to try to step in and help out. A little bit more about my background. Right now, I'm an attorney for a construction company, Barletta Engineering Corporation. We do a lot of heavy civil work in Massachusetts, a lot of work for Mass DOT and the MBTA. I've been an attorney here for about eight years. Prior to that, I was an environmental engineer and project manager. So, my undergraduate degree is in environmental engineering and I worked for an environmental and geotechnical firm for a number of years prior to going to law school, during law school as well. And here in, as part of my position as an attorney, I also handle some development work for the company. So, I think I told Jay when I spoke to him, I have been before Conservation Commissions and planning boards and zoning boards before as the applicant. So, not in my capacity in that sense as an attorney, but more as a project manager. So, I've been before the Holbrook Conservation Commission most recently. They are also completely Zoom now, which has actually worked out pretty well considering it's a, you know, it can be, it's hard enough and complicated enough to do in person, never mind trying to get through stuff on Zoom. But, so that's, that's sort of my general background. I'm happy to answer more detailed questions.
I appreciate that, thanks, Heather. Any of the Select Board members have questions for Heather? Paul?
Yeah, you know, working in the construction and engineering companies, do you see any complete interest with the town? I mean, have you done work for the town or overlap at all?
I have not.
Every once in a while.
Sure. No, we have not done any work for the town. We don't do any residential work. And the, an affiliated company did a residential development in Canton prior to the time that I started, but we don't have any residential developments currently in process. We do far more work on bridges, tunnels, wastewater treatment plants, things like that. The only full disclosure, I guess, the opposing counsel for the project that I've been working on in Holbrook is Dan Deutsch and Paul DeRensis. So, I know they're a town council, but I don't see that as a conflict at all, you know, where colleagues and they just happen to be on the other side for this particular project.
The most of the stuff you do is large construction, commercial, and municipal work, is that right?
Yes, mainly, mainly public works jobs, a lot of work for the T and limited, far more limited, commercial work and almost no residential.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Carrie?
I'm done.
Hi, Heather, thank you so much for applying. It's great to see fairly new people in the town throwing their hat into the ring. You obviously have a really great skillset. Because there are more applications than positions for this role, I'm just curious, are there any other committees or things in town that you are interested in if it doesn't work out with CONCOM? Because I can tell we don't want to lose you. I'm just curious if you have like a second choice or other things you're interested in.
I hadn't looked in particular to see what else was available or other committees that, you know, that may have openings right now. I have, you know, like I said, I have previously done work before planning boards and zoning boards. So, I'm, you know, generally familiar with the work that those boards do as well. But I don't necessarily have a second choice right now, although if I did not get this role, I would not, you know, go away and never come back.
Well, we wouldn't let you, for sure. Jack?
Yeah, hi. Again, thank you for stepping forward. Hypothetically, say you have a situation in which you feel strongly one way or another, but the law is pretty clear. How would you resolve that?
I would be very comfortable following the law, even if I did not necessarily agree with the outcome. I feel like I encounter that on a fairly regular basis at my work, which is frustrating sometimes if I disagree with, you know, either what the law is or the particular board or regulatory agency's interpretation of the law. But certainly, as a member of the Conservation Commission, I would look to the regulations and look to follow those as, you know, as closely as possible as needed.
Congratulations, right answer, thank you.
Has an attorney, right? She took notes.
It's hard sometimes for attorneys to give a right answer, but never mind.
Or give a straight answer, maybe. Right. Okay, any other questions? Corey?
As well jump in. Heather, thanks for reaching out to me and then I'm glad you got hooked up with Jay. And yeah, just the skillset you bring here is really impressive. So, you know, the town, this is the exact kind of thing that Jay was talking about. We need people that are both excited and interested, but also have a very particular skillset, which you definitely have. So, thank you again for throwing your hat in the ring. It's been, it's great.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great. In the interest of time, I'll wrap us up with a thank you and you might want to stay on in the gallery because we're going to be talking about potential regional sewer and wastewater treatment over the next couple of months and including our meeting from 7:00 to 8:00 tonight. So, but we will be in touch with you and thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Tracy, next up is Tom. Tom, if we could, you could unmute and show yourself. We see a T.
Here we go.
There we go. Little dark. Can you guys see him better than I can? Hi, how are you?
Closing in on you.
Right. Another lab, another lab owner, right?
See if I can fix that really quick. Oh, boy, I don't know.
That's okay, Tom, just if you want to just kind of, I'm sure you were listening, just there you go, that's much better, much better.
It's better.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, thank you.
You want to just give us a little summary of your background?
Yeah, I'm a recently retired exploration geologist. My background is in exploring for metallic commodities, but I worked for many years as a hydrologist, hydrogeologist, rather, and soil scientist. So, I've been looking around for something to do and I've been living in Cohasset since 2009 and conservation looked like a good fit. I thought that the skillset I have could be directly applicable to basically what, what they do. I just reviewed the last two years of minutes from the meetings and see that much of this is related to stormwater runoff and that's something that I know a bit about. So, I do bring a strong technical background to this. I've worked with engineers on all of my projects. Sometimes it goes well and sometimes it doesn't. Engineers and geologists are known to have their differences. I have a strong background in water quality as well. Spent a lot of time working on projects in central Pennsylvania that were related to groundwater contamination. So, I bring that also.
Terrific. I'll open it up for questions. Questions to Tom? Carrie?
Tom, you obviously have an impressive skillset here and we want you to be involved in town. Are there any other committees that you're interested in if it doesn't work out with CONCOM or other boards or anything you're interested in serving in?
Water and sewer.
Okay.
And those are elected positions, so.
Right, I'd rather start appointed and see how I, how that goes.
I expect that answer.
That's great. Any other questions? Paul?
So, one of the big concerns, which there's really not a lot of legal aspect to the point of blasting for ledge, which I suspect in the near future that may be added to the CONCOM list of items that are curious. And your background certainly would fit that and as well as the wastewater runoff is key in the town as well. So, again, great skills.
Blasting for decades, sometimes too close.
Yeah, I'm sure you're aware of the Master Plan Implementation Committee and, you know, they're going to be doing some work, which I know Sleckman-Creighton is working with the, you know, zoning bylaws as we look to the future of, you know, what do we want Cohasset to be and look like and how can we sort of, you know, set some legislative parameters around that? So, you know, there's a lot of important conversations relating to your skillsets and the work all of us are trying to accomplish. Jack, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Tom, for stepping forward. You've been in town long enough to look around. Is there one challenge that you think is most, both most difficult and most challenging that you see that might come before CONCOM?
I think that the, one of my, one of my concerns is that development be sewed, for example. I'm quite concerned that so much of the town is without sewer. We're seeing the effects on Straits Pond where we have runaway algae growth and swarms of midges every spring. I'm concerned about Gulf also with its nitrate problems. And I think that those, that subject needs to be considered as we plan for the future. So, that's really, that's one of the things that I think is really quite important that we're facing.
That's great. Another invitation to hang on in the gallery at 7:00.
Yes, it is.
Corey, did you?
I was just going to jump in and just say, you know, Tom, your background in geology and wastewater management, I mean, so often regulations are behind, you know, the science and it's good to hear. I mean, you're, you're going to be ahead, so you're going to be able to guide the town. And your passion for the other things, I mean, as Diane said, the discussion about how do we protect our watersheds and how do we, you know, protect just natural resources here in town, you know, we're learning more and more about, you know, just how our daily life can contaminate these areas if we're not careful. So, I'm really excited to be able to have your guidance on any of these issues.
I'd just say that we're going to develop. I mean, that's inevitable here and we should be looking to sustainable development, something that's not, you know, development that doesn't create any more impact than we can allow. And that's just really important to me that, that we're careful. We are going to develop. That's, I expect that. Everyone expects it, I think. And so, we just need to be careful about it.
Great. Thank you, Tom. We'll be in touch. Oh, Jack, sorry.
I just want to, just a little bit of concern here, same subject that I asked earlier about if you believe something and the law doesn't state that. You are aware the Conservation Commission is a regulatory body whose purpose is to apply the law as passed by the citizens and enforce it as it is written. This doesn't mean that you would not participate and there's an ongoing revisions going on the laws, but you are aware that as a commissioner, you are not to make the law, but you're to apply the law as it's been passed by the citizens.
I'm well aware of that and I'm, I know that I'm capable of putting aside my particular bias, because we all have biases, putting that aside and respecting the bylaws that have been voted on in town meeting. So, who am I to second-guess the voters?
And I mean, I was Chair of CONCOM, was on there for 10 years and I'm very active right now in working to upgrade a variety of those types of things. But it's important as a commissioner, potential commissioner, that you understand that it's a regulatory, but you just had the right answer. So, thank you and thank you for stepping forward.
Sure.
Sorry, thank you, Tom. Have a good night. I'm going to rush along and Tracy, ask you to promote Will Ashton.
Great, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Well, good evening, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, thanks for joining us. If you don't mind giving us a little summary of your background and we'll then ask you some questions.
Absolutely. So, my wife and I have been in Cohasset for about five years now and recently wanted to try to get more involved in the community, the town and everything. So, that's sparked my interest to, you know, search on the town website for the CONCOM here or any other boards. And for my background, I was an Army engineer for about five years doing site and civil, airfield, telepath, stuff like that. After I got out, I worked at Shawnee Construction in Boston doing hospitals and labs. Now, I'm in life science real estate specifically. So, my specific experience is on the other side of the CONCOM going before the commission or the ZBA or planning board or any of that, both as the contractor and now as the, on the owner's side. So, worked pretty extensively with civil engineers and land use attorneys and stuff like that in my daily work. So, I figured that CONCOM or something similar would, would fit what I do on a daily basis.
Thank you. Wow, jackpot. Three very impressive candidates. Questions from the board? Carrie?
Thank you for applying, we really appreciate it. You obviously have an impressive skillset. We are interested if there are any other boards or committees you are interested in, if not CONCOM.
Yeah, absolutely. The other one that struck my interest was the ZBA. So, throw that out there.
Good to know.
And if I remember your application correctly, Will, there was also, you also noted the Design Review Board.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
Which is another one that, that is appointed by the Troyco, which is a scary sounding committee of the Chair of the Select Board, the moderator and the Chair of the Advisory Committee. Their appointments haven't been done yet, so that is also something that, should this not work out, that we would, you know, somebody will reach out to any of the candidates that don't make it through the final round.
Definitely.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Why can't we expand the number of CONCOM? And I know the answer, but I just had to throw it out there.
I actually think, Jack, we could, but anyway, we'll discuss that tomorrow night.
I don't want to drag this on forever. We are so blessed to have three extraordinarily candidates.
We could pack the committee.
And if it doesn't work out for me and there's another one that, that it would work on, that would be, that'd be fine. I just wanted to be able to get involved in some way, so.
We really appreciate it, thank you. Questions, Corey?
Yeah, William, thanks for reaching out and thank you for your service as well. Just what you've done, I mean, you just seem like you have the mentality to take a project, break it down, understand it, get it done. And that's just, I mean, my brain is buzzing with ways, you know, the town could use you. Also like that you're a NASCAR fan, so we'll leave that there. And that's it, thank you.
Yeah, he's overqualified for the cable, Corey.
We're trying to launch it, we'll launch a car show eventually.
Yeah, oh, there you go. All right. Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I am going to say thank you, Will, and with the others, we'll be in touch. We're going to have a discussion amongst ourselves tomorrow night. It is a public meeting. You're welcome to tune in or participate through the Zoom platform. And we're going to move on to the rest of our business. Jay, I know you're sitting there and I don't want to put you on the spot, you don't need to say anything, but I thank you for, for being here and kind of teeing up this conversation. And if there's anything you do want to say, I'm happy to let you have the last word.
No, I appreciate that. And again, I'd be happy to send a separate email to the Select Board with my thoughts on the three applicants. Board with my thoughts on the three applicants tonight, if it's of any help to you. This is your decision, it's not my decision, obviously, but I'm happy to share some thoughts with you in a separate email later on this evening or tomorrow morning for consideration. Thank you.
Diane, you're muted.
I think I have a nervous clicker. We'll take just a minute while we bring in the Sewer Commission, and let them call their meeting to order. We're in order, so we'll just kind of wait till we fully assemble, and then try to move on with our agenda. Hey, Bill.
How are you?
Good evening. We have John.
Hi, Bill.
I don't see Wayne out there, Bill. Is he coming tonight?
Oh, yeah, he's coming. I've talked to him twice.
He's not in the attendee queue yet.
No, he's got some news to share with us, so he'll be on.
Okay.
Excellent. There's Wayne.
And I give, both Diane and Carrie, you have co-host authority. You can run the questions.
Okay.
And then I have Brian. Brian is up here, too.
And Brian's here? Okay. So, just as a matter of course, Bill, you need to just officially call your board, your commission, to order through a roll call vote, and then we'll get off and running.
Okay, I'd like to start the sewer portion of this meeting and ask for a roll call, starting with myself, Bill McGowan.
Wayne Sajchuk here.
John Beck.
They're all here, ready to go.
The gang's all here. Okay, welcome, everybody. So, I'm just trying to pull up my agenda. I think what I'd like to do is just sort of talk through some of what we did last week, what we discussed last week, any new information and ideas, ask for any public input from the gallery. And then, ultimately, as we noted on the agenda, get to a point at the end of this meeting where we have some definitive next steps. We're not gonna resolve anything, or, you know, decide we're going with Plan Double Z or anything next week. We're gonna, you know, hopefully break out, or break us down into some focus working groups to come back at a time that we can discuss amongst ourselves with some concrete next steps, and to get us to a resolution in terms of what the town, you know, what information do we need, where do we get it, and what the town would like to pursue in terms of conversations relating to sewer that addresses the Cohasset-specific needs. So, I guess I'll just open the floor right now to any of the sewer commissioners or Select Board members that would like to comment on anything discussed, or that has come up in discovery over the past week relating to, specifically to Cohasset's priorities, and things that you want to make sure we focus our next steps on. So, if you don't mind, just if anybody has anything to say, raise your hand, so I can keep us flowing. Carrie?
Just broadly, after I've been reflecting this past week on everything, it seems like we definitely have both short-term and long-term needs, and we also have regional needs and Cohasset needs. And I think that we need to be doing our best to communicate all of that in a way that's easily digestible to the voters and people in Cohasset. I know it's a really complex issue. I know there's a lot of language and vocab here that we are using that isn't necessarily easy to understand, but I'm really happy with how last week's meeting went. And I do think there is a solution we can come to that is the best for the town of Cohasset and the entire region.
Great. Thank you. Anyone want the floor? Wayne?
I have two comments, and one is sort of a planning item that today we received an estimate to go back about eight or 10 years, when we hired Dan Coughlin to do a search of the town for potential satellite plants, should our plant come to Cohasset. And at the time, we didn't even talk about necessarily increasing flows to Halle or anything like that. It was, you know, there were 13 years left in our contract, so it wasn't something you'd talk about at the present time. So, he put a proposal together that is somewhere between around $14,000 to do about a week's work of gathering back the information that was done in a, it got to a point where these were possible sites, but we didn't take it through to what the capacity those sites would be. And of course, being 10 or 12 years ago, certain laws have changed with the EP in terms of, they encourage you now to put more water into the ground, rather than up, you know, into the ocean and stuff. And they have stricter rules on how you build the discharge from these satellite plants, because the satellite plant would in all likelihood be a discharge plant. So, my belief is that one of the things that we should tackle over the next few weeks is, what are our alternatives within our town, should we need more capacity? We should also look at continuing our agreement with Halle, and we'd like to maybe make sense, we'd like to start negotiations now, three years before, and can we still give you 80,000 gallons, or whatever, at an affordable price? I think that should be one of the things on the table. And then, thirdly, I think that the folks that were leading this on a regional basis, and I know we're not gonna talk about that tonight, but I just think that whoever does that should be looking at all alternatives for the individual towns, not just a simple solution of, this is what we can do. Because I found out I had it confirmed today through the Situate Sewer Department, that in fact, they have a sewer main that goes from North Situate right to their plant that is not being used. It was installed in 2004 by the MBTA as part of their mitigation program. Well, to me, if I was someone looking at alternatives, I'd say, what could that pipe be used to solve Situate's problems? But of course, I'm in Cohasset, so I don't, I just want you to know that there might be alternatives for the other towns that have not been discovered or considered today. So, if we do go a route like that, we should have that investigation done, so that, you know, we could solve as many people's problems as possible. So, that's my comments.
Yeah, just, you know, I think we'll get to this point, but what I really want to try to do, and Carrie framed it really well initially, like, there's short-term, there's long-term, there's regional, there's Cohasset there. And then, within Cohasset, and I think this is the piece that we need, we as a collective, the Select Board and other committees in town, and the Sewer Commission. And then, there's, within Cohasset, there's short-term, there are long-term, there's priorities that, you know, that have nothing to do with operational aspects of a sewer, but it has to do with development, for example, or it has to do with affordable housing. So, I would love to try to keep this conversation moving in exactly this order, right, so that by the end, you know, in an hour or so, we start thinking about this and realizing that, you know, there's a bunch, because I don't want, we can't solve Situate's options, and, you know, the study frankly was a regional study. So, the piece that's missing, in my mind, is the Cohasset study. But we know we have a lot of data. You guys are, you know, know more than we know about sewer, but, you know, our planning board knows more about potential future development, or, you know, so that's the kind of thing that I want to try to get us to a point at which we have a sense of who can make some of these, who are the right buckets of people to have these conversations? Does that make sense? Yeah. Corey?
Yeah, no, I like how you phrase that. And one question, and Wayne, you just kind of touched on it, and one thing that I'm really trying to understand Cohasset is, the question of, you know, what are our projections for what we need, not just in development, but, you know, we said, you know, if we located a plant somewhere, we'd probably have to sewer to that. And then, so we're talking about increasing sewer in different areas of town, and I'm sensitive to, you know, where we draw the lines, and at what point, you know, how does this snowball? Can we project exactly how much, you know, in 10 years, how much sewer we will need? And then, you know, really just talk about the options. I'm really excited to see the site plans that you're, the site location stuff you've already done, because I think that's kind of gonna be key for the town. And then, you know, I'm a big believer in studying everything we can, so, you know, increasing, you know, our level of knowledge here is gonna be important, because it's gonna be a decision that's gonna affect us for 50 years or longer. So.
Right. And, you know, at the same time, just push back a little bit, like, we don't want it to take forever, you know, because there are decision-making points that are in front of us. And I think a lot of the data is there. It's just a matter of kind of collating it, you know, and getting it. Certainly with the Master Plan, there were so many identified, you know, issues and priorities that maybe only tangentially impacts sewer, or sewer tangentially impacts these ideas, but we gotta get them all, you know, into these buckets. Bill?
Well, listening to all this, I wonder if I could make a recommendation. And Paul, don't take offense to this, because this is what I do in the healthcare industry, but because typically, it's dealing with lots of different constituencies that have different ways. But I think we should, and I'm gonna speak sort of freely about this, I think we should make a, you know, a group of folks, and I would suggest that they're probably Sewer Board, the Towns Engineer, and to some extent, Woodard and Curran, because of the data that they have mined so far. And we basically put a white paper together that talks about the issues that are out there, the pros and cons of doing this, that, or whatever, because we don't know what those are yet, what the costs will be, and what the alternatives will be. Is there a potential of putting a plant on beachwood? Is there a potential of putting a plant down at the end of forest? There are some things that Cohasset could do outside of Halle, outside of Situate. What would the timing of this kind of thing be? You know, all the while, looking at, how do we protect Cohasset's interests first foremost and all the way? And second of all, how do we do something with minimum disruption to the lives of the residents? Because, you know, digging up Jerusalem Road or Atlantic Gav, you guys are gonna hear it first, and then you're gonna be calling us, and we'll be turning our phones off. So, we need to take, we need to be sure of how this thing gets implemented to be fair and just to everybody.
I'm gonna go to Bill, to Jack, and then John after Jack, and then I have some extension on what you just said, Bill. Jack?
Yeah, good point, Bill. And to Corey's point, one of the things that's been true for Cohasset for years is sewer, to some extent, influence development. And I'm a big believer that, because I've seen it in 10 years of doing stormwater stuff in CONCOM, and that we are getting to the point where we are, the development is beyond the sustainability, and just putting a sewer pipe in doesn't make the environment be able to sustain the development. It allows it, but whether it's a local plant, or whether it's a massive mega-pipe feeding hull, or whatever, that's still a concern. I do think, though, that we were much better off as a town, and we are elected, we are the Cohasset Select Board, that we are better off controlling our own destiny. And to the extent that we're able to control our own destiny, I think Cohasset in the long term will be much, will remain the type of town that we've kind of are in charge of maintaining.
Thanks, Jack. John?
Yes, I just wanted to, I enjoyed the interview for the Conservation Commission that I was watching earlier. And in particular, there are always little tidbits there that you pick up on. The Straits Pond has been sewed since North Cohasset did their side, and Halle did theirs. So, that's already protected by the sewer, just as is all the other bodies of water in Cohasset, with the exception of South Main Street. And that, we've identified earlier, is one of our, if not the top priority for the Sewer Commission, is to protect insofar as we can in Cohasset, the Gulf River. And once we finish that, and that's not gonna be an easy sell from a political standpoint, but I think the recommendation of whatever kind of group arises from our discussions tonight are good. Carrie, I just wanted to also say, I think your pinpointing the short and long-term needs is very, very important. As we go forward in looking into these issues, it's not just, bring me another rock. It's trying to take what we know, make the most logical sense of it, and then pinpoint those things that are logical, rational, and need to happen. For example, there are a lot of areas in Cohasset where properly designed and maintained septic systems are perfectly okay. They work, they protect the environment, they return water to the groundwater, and those are good things. That's not true for the entire town, by any stretch of the imagination, but getting ourselves focused on the next steps are very, very important, and not just wander off into more quote "studies" end quote, which don't get you very far if you don't have your eyes focused and set on what definitely we really need to do. Thank you.
Thanks. So, just in the, to kind of advance us, I don't want to, if anybody else wants to speak, absolutely. And thank you for tuning in, Brian. I know you turned your video off, which is fine, but we'll call on you, I'm sure. So, to Bill's point, you know, I wonder if, you know, we maybe start with two work streams. And the Sewer Commission, you know, does what Bill was saying, which is basically presents and kind of gathers some of the studies that have been done, the data that exists through the recent wastewater study that, for regional, with regional options. And so, you kind of put it all, put it all out there in terms of sewer and sewer operations, and the things that are on your point of, you know, from your point of view, what the priorities are, what the options are, what costs are. And that's one stream. And then, the second stream, which has to take place, which is the piece that's been missing, I think, in all of this, is what came out of the master planning. And maybe, you know, when you make too many, when you have too many people around the table, trying to accomplish, you know, a kind of a fast-track study or position paper, I'm afraid we would get too bogged down in just the sheer number of people. Maybe secondarily, we work with the Master Plan Implementation Committee that, you know, that has their eyes already on some of the priorities that exist outside of sewer-specific. But, you know, the town priorities, which include the harbor and environmental needs, future development, economic development, that kind of thing. And we, in that stream, does something similar. You know, it puts together a list of top priorities, short-term, long-term, considered options, and then we sort of blend these grids, if you will, and use that as a guidepost for us to have that big public conversation that we need to. and use that as a guidepost for us to have that big public conversation that we need to have about, okay, what makes sense now? What options do we want to pursue? Does that sound too cumbersome to everyone? Brian, you're going to have to be a big, you know, take a big role in herding cats, if you will, literally and figuratively, as Clarabelle makes her appearance. Anybody comment? Am I crazy? Is that the way to go? Paul?
It sounds like the Sewer Commission, at least two of the three, seem to think North Maine is a big concern from searing point of view. So short-term is going to be looking what the town is probably going to have to sewer or need to sewer, I wouldn't say urgently, but probably the next two to five years. I think longer-term is going to be, you know, a secondary plant, if necessary. The other thing, which I guess I would think about is, you know, the governance, if we do enter some sort of regional plan, that would be down the road. But I think upfront, it's going to be looking at what options are available right now that we probably should approach, again, within three to five years. Stop and Shop Plaza, probably North Maine, and attempt to clear the Gulf would be, you know, my thought. Longer-term would be, you know, look at maybe a secondary plant. I think the septic systems that are out there that work are quite good. You know, if you have a leach field, that's environmentally quite good. It's when you start throwing on topical fertilizer to your lawn and everything else, that'll get dumped into, you know, above and beyond your cesspool or your septic or your leach field. So those are my thoughts.
Carrie?
I agree with Paul, and I really liked Bill's point about kind of making a list of advantages and disadvantages to all these ideas. I also think we really need to focus on a cost-benefit analysis of all these options, too. Again, both short-term and long-term. For example, a secondary plant, as we know, is going to be incredibly costly. And I'm not sure how the town is going to feel about that. But if we think about, you know, long-term, short-term financial implications, I think we really have to be talking about that as well. And if we don't have the info, we need to figure out how to get that in terms of financial projections.
What, you know, Corey, yeah, I'll get you. What I really want to try to do is, I just feel like there's so much data that exists that we need to find the path to distilling it all to get to exactly what we're saying, which is some cost-benefit analysis of the top options to address what are identified as top community, you know, needs and desires. So, I mean, obviously, we got to deal with the re-permitting of the plant. That's a short-term something. What do we need to do to do that? That might have nothing to do with expand, you know, expansion of sewer area may, general capacity issues with the development that we have going forward. And then, again, all the, all the kind of master plan-type issues that have been identified, whether it's affordable housing or, you know, economic development. Or, I know Katie's in the waiting room, and I'd love to have her just kind of chime in during some public input. But again, we got to try to find a way to get all of this kind of gridded out, if you will, so that we have something to look at that says, this plan addresses A, B, C, D, and E identified needs, and it's going to cost this much, and it's going to take this much time because it's a regional option. And B is, you know, similarly. So I think you, I hope you understand where I'm trying to get us to. Brian, did you want to say anything? As I see Bill did, too.
No, I'm just here to answer any questions. But yeah, I think a lot of the things that you're bringing up are identified in various studies. You know, the regional study has a lot of, at least, flows from different parts of town, what they might be, and, you know, trying to quantify what we can process and what we can't. And, you know, if there's another plant in town, what would we need to take on with that? Or do we want to send it somewhere else?
Right. Bill? And then Corey?
Yeah, the, you know, it's, you know, it's great to be sort of, to look at Cohasset. And I am certainly 99.9999 focused on that. But I think that if we truly want to clean up the harbor, we have to engage with, excuse me, with Situit. And to look at various alternatives with them that we might be able to work with. I don't know how that will happen. I think that Wayne's, Wayne's a part-time private eye, in case you don't know. But, I mean, the fact that Wayne picked up the fact that there actually is a sewer pipe that runs down. I had no idea. And I don't know whether Situit even knew that. But that's something that they could, you know, potentially go down their route. And, you know, I mean, there are some things that I think that as a secondary process to us putting together things that Cohasset wants, we should look at what could we potentially do with Situit? Because at the end of the day, we have to work with them to get the Gulf clean. Because between Borders Street and Gannett, that's probably three-quarters of the pollution that comes in there.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm not suggesting that focusing on Cohasset needs excludes any of the other communities. In fact, you know, I totally agree. Like, I think that, to me, one of the biggest priorities, and it was, you know, certainly identified in the harbor planning and master planning, is the health of the Gulf and the harbor. And, you know, we're all interconnected. The ocean and the waterways don't, you know, don't dam up when you cross another municipality. So to me, like, a plan would have to include that, assuming that's one of our town priorities, and I think it has been identified as such.
Okay.
So Wayne?
I've been a sewer commissioner now for about 13 or 14 years. And I think that we've, in that time, we've all focused on solving problems in areas. So when you had the hillside, it's all clay, and people couldn't do anything with their houses because they couldn't put, you know, new septic systems in. In Little Harbor, which was a totally separate thing, which, you know, 450 houses got hooked up that were absolutely polluting because they had all that ledge, and the water goes down the ledge and goes into Little Harbor, and it caused those problems. So I've always concentrated on solving issues. Now, with a plant in Beachwood, the intent on some of that was that at some point in time, we might need to put, to sewer the houses that already exist around the reservoir, for instance. And we did a little bit of sewer on Lily Pond, but we didn't continue it around so that we don't have the whole pond sewered, only a small portion of it that's near the plant. And that was done so that we, because we were going to put the plant on the sewer because it was discharging waste into the water that the brick going into the plant. So it made sense to do that. So my belief is that if we went ahead and did a plan that said, let's say the master plan people want to do it. We want to sewer this area of town because it will promote business, it will promote development, all that. I think that would be the biggest mistake that we could make. Because our town, we want the town to pretty much stay the way it is, but we want it to be a clean, healthy town. And we want to have sort of, you know, some growth, but we certainly don't want 100% growth. And the more that you're going to sewer, the more you're going to squeeze another house lot here and another house lot there. And they're not going for affordable prices, they're going for huge prices. So sewer has, in the past, before my time, had almost always been used for zoning. We sewed the problem that really needed to be sewed, but we didn't want to go to other places because we didn't want to expand the town unnecessarily. And I think the final thing is that whatever we do for expansion really involves the whole town. So the, sort of, the rules are that if we're going to go and sewer something that isn't in the district, we've got to go to town meeting and present our case to all the voters. So I think that should stay that way.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's important for us to find the right way to get as much information and that addresses all the priorities and as many options within that as we possibly can. Corey?
Yeah, I got a couple of comments. I mean, you know, one thing which I kind of find concerning and I'm not thrilled about is that, you know, there's very little discussion about what the town wants here. There's a lot of opinions about, you know, how we think the town should be, or we want the town to stay like it was 20 years ago, or we think this is a high priority body. But no one's talked about what the town wants. And this is going to go to town meeting. And whatever we bring to town meeting has to be, you know, understandable and has to be honest with the voters here in town about what the options are. And it can't be clouded by, you know, an issue which really is a symptom, not the problem. Zoning is a problem in this town. We can all agree with that. And we're going to have a process to fix that. We shouldn't be using a separate process to hijack another process. So I want us to focus on how we engage the towns, and the town can make calls. It shouldn't just be us five, it shouldn't be just you three or us eight. It should be the whole town when we talk about these big infrastructure projects. Bill said it earlier. This is going to be disruptive to towns. There's no version of this that the town doesn't, isn't disruptive. I mean, whether we're on 3A or South Main Street or wherever, it's going to be a problem. It's going to cause us issues, and it's going to cost us money. And that needs to be a town decision. So please keep that in your mind when you're thinking about these things.
And, yes, to that point, and that's where, you know, why I think that with the master plan having just been completed and really focusing us over the course of whatever it took for two, two and a half years, focused us on envisioning what that, what that right, you know, what we really do want as a community. And to your point, and this is why it was really important to start these conversations together, because we do have to sell whatever we do to town meeting, period. And, you know, we're going to need data and emotions and ideas and some creativity so that we do the right thing. But again, with our objectives in mind, and those objectives, I think, are relatively, the answers aren't known or clear, but the objectives about kind of protecting our community to the extent that we can and having, recognizing that development is going to take place, but we want it to be sensible and have sustainable models so that it maintains the character of the town is really, really critical. Bill?
You've got some of my thunder. But what I was going to do on behalf of the board was to sort of confirm and reiterate what Wayne said, that we have always, whether it be looking at 3A or South Main Street or wherever, we know that before anything happens, it has to be presented and agreed upon by the town. We have to go and get, you know, we have to go before town meeting and get that agreed. So I just want to confirm that fact. That's always where we've been directed to.
Jack was next, and then you, Corey.
Yeah. You know, I agree with both Diane and Bill. You know, one of the things is that I'm constantly amazed that when I talk to people around the community, and they could be a rabid environmentalist, they could be an environmental skeptic or whatever, but everybody agrees that this is a special place and that we need to protect it. What's very interesting is the new environmental, smart environmental policies, smaller is better, are jiving perfectly with some of our more, shall we say, traditional citizens. Because people realize that some smart solutions will do that. But people also look around and they say, this is a special place, we need to work together. And the good news for all of us here tonight is that when we ask our citizens, and we should, as Corey said, we are, need to listen to them, what I'm hearing from them, and I'm sure everybody else here is also hearing, is that there's a unanimity, or almost unanimity, of opinion on this. So this gives us kind of our lodestar, this gives us a guiding light, which is going to make moving forward much better. And by the way, this, everybody who's here has done such a fantastic job. We're very fortunate.
So Corey?
Just want to clarify about going in front of town. And I understand that whenever you want to do an expansion or some type of work, you have to go in front of town meeting. That somewhat ignores the fact that you can choose unilaterally to not do something. Is that true? So you can choose, as your board, to not bring something to town meeting. And that's the thing that I want to keep in mind here is that, you know, even if it's something that, you know, may not come from you, it's something that the town should hear. So we shouldn't operate as, you know, bodies that are only, serve to be obstacles. We should be bodies that enable conversation and bodies that get information now.
Absolutely. And so, you know, one of the things, and I'd love to, if anybody that's in the peanut gallery would like to speak, I'd love to take any public comments or questions on this. Again, it's, the question is, what is the best structure or framework for us to kind of advance this discussion? Knowing that we need to, we need to take the needs of the town as we know them, as they're defined now. That doesn't mean they're going to not change within a week or by law or away or whatever. But, you know, really, what is it we're trying to address? And what are the problems and the issues? Both in terms of the entire community and some of the very specific issues that the Sewer Commission has responsibility for addressing, like re-permitting of the plant, whatever capacity issues exist. You know, getting that all kind of framed. And then, understanding all of those issues, what are the options? What are the costs? What are the drivers? To get us to address as many of those issues as we possibly can. And how do we have that conversation? As Brian said, we have a lot of the information. We have had a lot of public input. We will, once we have some ideas of what makes sense and what's going to address the issues that we have, then we'll have additional public input. But what I don't want to do is get bogged down at a table with 10 people to advance this conversation to some real decision-making points. But I also want to make sure we don't leave any, you know, any... I want to make sure we get as much information as possible, as delineated as possible and as teed up into a plan as possible in the short term. Corey? I hope you have a suggestion.
Well, I like your question format. So I'm wondering if we can maybe just try to work backwards and say, here are like 10 questions that we need to have, you know? And so we say, you know, what is our projected plant output if we get re-permitted? What is, you know, let's get, you know, a set of questions that we all agree we need answers to, and then go from there.
And just to add to that, I think what I've been trying to say is there are those questions that are very sewer commission and sewer knowledge specific. And then there is others that are more general and community-oriented. So, again, how do we get all that into one place? Jack, hang on one second, because Carrie had her hand up.
I was going to suggest, is there a way we can workshop this out right now by putting all of our options on the table and then brainstorming what we think as of right now, the advantages or disadvantages or questions we have under each of those categories or options are?
That would be wonderful if we could.
I'm a professor. I wish I had my whiteboard with me to start, you know, do a brainstorming session on a whiteboard. But I think we know enough right now that we actually can start creating at least a semblance of the document that Bill suggested earlier, meaning laying out all the options with clear advantages and disadvantages to all of them.
I think we can certainly get the questions worked shot, as you said, tonight. I just question whether we can really understand the pros and the cons and the costs and the benefits and that kind of thing. Jack?
Yeah. You know, it occurred to me that we just had this study for the regionalization. Perhaps the sewer board could do a mini-study as to how you would solve our Cohasset sewage issues internal, within our capacity. Because we had a pretty good thing, so we know, we have a pretty good idea what we can do regionally if we go that way. But especially with the new knowledge that is just fresh today, that perhaps, you know, a little bit of thought as to how we would solve these problems, you know, internally. Because I'm really hearing that there's a lot of sentiment for that. And we do have some new information. And I would not suggest a full study like we had before. We can study this to death. But, you know, I think we could use a little more information on that potential.
Jack, and then I'll get Bill. That was exactly my thought at noon today, to be honest with you. Like, you know, I wish we had a master plan for sewer because it would be a lot easier to back into, you know, some next steps if we did that. And, you know, I guess it's just a matter of how much information already exists and, you know, whether we can use that and what's the timing and relating to our needs. Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I would propose...
Yeah. I mean, I, I would propose, I'm going to ask John and Wayne to comment on what I say and even Brian on this. I would propose that if we do a committee of the sewer commission with Brian, along with somebody from Wood and Current to mine the data that they've already given. It's something that in a, say, you know, if we give ourselves, I don't know, three, four, or five week period where we develop all this stuff and look at everything that we have that is pertinent to what could, what could deal with the town of Cohasset first and potentially a relationship with, excuse me, with Situate. And then maybe other relationships with other towns in that order. But again, looking at Situate, excuse me, Cohasset first. I think then once that, once that information is developed, it can, it can be given to other committees that look at, you know, further development in the town zoning, planning, whatever. Based on what we see as our capacity, what our future capacity is, what we can do with Situate, what Situate could do with us, if potentially viable for us and what the whole cost disruption rate, all these things are. But I think that it's necessary to like, you know, for us to dig a hole first and then to see what everyone else thinks about that hole. And John and Wayne, I would ask you to throw your, your comments at it.
We do have a priority, searing South Main Street. We've said it many, many times and many, many forums that that's our next task if we want to do our job. We have the capacity to do that with our current treatment plant as well as some additional capacity to be used in other ways, maybe. Like South, the Stop and Shop Plaza issue. We have done a tremendous amount of homework on that particular issue, primarily because it includes some affordable housing component. We initially said no to the developer, but when we learned later that about the affordable housing component and the fact that the select board was desirous of seeing that come to fruition, we took another look. And we changed our position. We have had a five-page legal document in front of the owner of the South Shore Plaza. I'll just use that phrase for two months now. It's up to him to decide whether or not he wants to sign that connection agreement. So far, we have not gotten a response, one way or the other. But he knows it's there and he's read it.
And I'm just going to caution you, John, not to go too far down into any personal, you know, any specific items that aren't on the agenda.
It's, it's, it's capacity related and we do have the capacity to handle it. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Fair enough. Yep.
Yep.
Cory?
So John, you mentioned the, um, the capacity thing. That's one thing that I was a little bit confused about. I don't, maybe I'm doing a different math here. But as I understand it, you know, our permit for the, uh, our existing water treatment plant has expired and we're going to have to renew that at a certain time in the future. And there's a potential that the plant could be downrated in order to meet the nitrogen output. Considering we, we have South Main Street and the Stop and Shop Plaza. To my numbers, it sounds like we're either, we're going to be pretty close or perhaps over capacity at that point or under capacity. I'm sorry. Is that the numbers, is that how you see it as well? Or do you see a different scenario than I'm, than I'm laying out?
I see it a little bit differently because we have a permit and we're operating under the terms and conditions of that permit. It's up to the DEP to decide whether or not we're going to get a revised permit. We've been operating under that permit, which expired in 2012. Since then, with the full understanding and agreement of the regulatory body. So we have a permit. It allows us to process up to 450, 450,000 gallons a day. We're currently running a little over 300,000 gallons a day. There is plenty of capacity to sewer South Main Street and take the flow from the other private property, should that come to pass. And still have significant margin. The potential hooker is a reduction in the nitrogen allowable discharge limit. That is complicated. And the reason we've been operating under that so-called expired permit is because the DEP hasn't decided what they really want to do yet in spite of things that we've all heard from one source or another. They don't consider it that big a deal. And it isn't that big a deal when it comes to the health of the harbor. Because the contribution from our sewage treatment plant is in the one or 2% range of the nitrogen that flows into the harbor from runoff.
So do, do we have any guarantee or any, I mean, structural way to really say we can expect our permit to remain the same for the next 10 years?
No.
Okay. And if we had this additional flow to our plant. So we're at 323 now. We're adding, let's say we had 30 and 30. So we're at 390. You know, I know that a few, a few months ago, we had the issue where we had to change a membrane and we pumped to hull. And we pumped 130,000 gallons per day and that overdid our, that was beyond the capacity of the system. If we added these other flows to our plant without the additional way to release some flow at a hull, aren't we squeezing ourselves for redundancy purposes here?
I guess I don't quite understand your question. Is it desirable?
Do we try to rephrase? I'm just, what I'm.
If the question is, is it desirable to have the ability to send sewage to hull, the answer is yes. And we would like to keep that. They're the ones who said, if you don't do it our way, we'll take our marbles and go home.
I want to hear about that too. Yeah. I, my concern is if we're adding capacity or adding flow to our current plant. And you know, we have this permitting issue, but even if we still had 450,000 gallons and we had a failure like we had four months ago, how do we recover? If we have that additional flow going to our wastewater treatment plant? Considering that the existing flow we had was already a problem to try to re divert to hull.
What you're saying is, what do you do if half the plant is unusable? Most of the time, that would not be an issue. And as long as the overflow capability is there to send it to hull, we could do that. You just have to pay the price. That's all. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I just, I, I know Paul Schubert has a question and then Bill raised his hand. Bill, were you going to try to address that or are you?
John answered it. No, that's fine.
Okay. Paul?
I think that one key thing here would be the inter municipal agreement with haul. So we could potentially, should there be problems with the plant, that we can transfer some flow to hull. We are going to probably have to pay a price for it, but that I think is probably one of the key components, short-term that needs to be accomplished. See what they're willing to charge us. The other thing we don't look again at North Main and see what that would involve cost structure. Sorry, South Main, the cost structure and the disruption. I think those are probably two very clear hurdles or problems right up front that would, would be in the ability to, to sewer, the ability of volume. And have some redundancy if we get involved with a, an agreement with a hull.
Looking ahead on the permit issue, Cory. Anything we do with regard to South Main Street is going to have to be approved ahead of time by the DEP. And that's when I suspect if we go down that road, that we're going to find out what the DEP's requirements are going to be with regard to nitrogen. And then we can address whether or not at that point in time, we want to continue A or B, what modifications we might have to make to the plant. Or C, whether or not we seek an offshore discharge point, which would likely not result in a reduction in the nitrogen discharge requirements. So those are questions that you will, in the course of events, have to answer without exposing yourself to some disastrous ish, set of issues or whatever.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I think because of the dealings that we have had with, with our different meetings that we've had, that DEP is certainly on the sideline saying, you know, if we do this, then we don't have to worry about that. But my feeling is that we believe that if we go ahead and first of all, the nitrate level in the harbor before we have any discharge is twice what it is that we're putting in today. So my belief is that, that nitrates are coming partially from the houses that are along in Cohasset, partially from, partially from Bound Brook going on up through 3A and heading on up to Beechwood. And if we could demonstrate that the nitrates in the harbor are better after we've finished or while we're even in doing the calculations, because all that water is going into the ground and it is going to go into the water. Then our case about us having to lower it when we're actually lowering it through doing the remediation, that is why we're, we want to do it, that should be a win-win for everybody. We're going to have cleaner water going in. Our water isn't going to get any dirtier. How much do you want to lower it even more? Secondly, the estimates to do what, what they want us to do are only in the couple of million dollar range. But we will require a little bit more room for us to do it in. So that's our, our problem is almost more the real estate to put the structure in that'll do the, that'll do the cleanup. So that, um, I think someone's going to be on our side at some point in, when you're on a practical basis.
So Cory and then I'm.
Oh, I just wanted to add one more thing. People have probably forgotten that the same DEP we're talking about, about nitrogen limits and so forth, is the same DEP that labeled our treatment plant, the best small wastewater treatment plant in the entire Commonwealth.
I remember when we got that award.
That was our plant.
Yep.
So it's been doing pretty well.
I'm just, I'm just a little bit, Wayne, I, I'm listening to what you're saying and I'm really processing it, you know, fully. And, and I'm just, I'm slightly reminded by what Jack said just a little bit earlier in our earlier meeting that, you know, we may want to believe that something is, should be right or this way, but the regulations may or may not be that way. And we may or may not have a choice. So I'm really trying to understand, you know, what risk the town is, is I don't like when we make a decision without realizing we made a decision by making another decision. You make one decision, that means you have to do something else. So I'm just thinking, how much risk are we undertaking by gambling? That, that we can convince the DEP of this. I mean, I'm not on the DP and I don't know enough about the regulations here.
We're not gambling because they're just not dealing with it, period. You can't talk to them about it.
Well, but they will do with us at some point, right?
They can't go ahead and say, they can't do this. They can't say, shut the plant down today. They just can't do it. How can they do it? How could they politically do it? How could they publicity wise do it?
I mean, are, are there fines the town could be open for? I mean, there's got to be some sort of, I mean.
They're going to have to give you a certain period of time to come into compliance because they've let you run in this manner up till this, since 2012. They have not said once, you have to do this better. You have to do this. You have to do this. You got to do that. Everything and anything that we have done regulatory, we have done. And we meet all of our, you know, our report card every month has been pass, 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 pass. So that's.
Jack and then Paul, and then I, I do want to hear from Katie Dugan, who's the chair of the master plan implementation committee, only because they have, the, the committee and the select board have kind of structured a bunch of different working group formats to tackle some of these big, big macro issues in town. And, and, and I, again, I want to try to get us to that point, to, to Carrie's earlier point. I don't know that we can workshop everything tonight because there's so much. But we, we need to workshop it somehow and in some format and as soon as possible. So Jack and then Paul.
Yeah, two brief points. And one of the things I think it's important for us to understand is we don't have a failing sewage plant. We have a well-run sewage plant. We have handled these matters very responsibly. We did get that award and we got that award because we earned it and people recognized that. So we're not in a situation like we were with Little Harbor where my God, you're going to have to do something. So we have a very well-functioning system. It's doing well. What's very interesting to me, and this is a point of information and goes to what Cory had said earlier about what would it cost? If we put a, we're able to off-site or put some of our treatment in another site in some of the things that Wayne, you found out. Do we have an idea what it costs to put up that kind of auxiliary or secondary plant?
Yes, we do. And it was.
What is it?
Five to nine million dollar range.
Okay.
Sorry, say it again. It was, didn't come through.
Five to nine million dollars.
To, to build another plant?
A mini plant, a mini plant.
So what does mini, what does mini plant?
Duplicate what we have. Probably a couple hundred thousand gallons a day.
Okay.
I'm going to go to Paul and then Katie.
The, the, you know, the plant itself and Cory's concern, the plant is running very well. We've had very good state recommendations or state awards. In addition, we're under, under capacity. So we've got a good faith effort from the town point of view to the Department of Environmental Protection that they, they would not give a draconian measure. And if they did, we could easily say, well, then you need to do this to every single other plant that is on the water of a town that is Swamp Scott, you know, Marblehead, any of the other ones that have a plant. So we're, we're in pretty good company that we've got a very good, well-run plant. It's not over, over the limit. And I, I think that is, you know, the good faith effort that the, the DEP could not easily, you know, make a permit that is unreasonable. That's.
So I, I'm going to promote Katie just because she is, is somewhat expert on the master plan and, and has really helped us understand how best to kind of move some of these conversations forward. And to my earlier point, because there's been so much kind of operational work done with the sewer commissioners and their understanding of the kind of plant permitting and those issues and some of the, what I would call operational things. My earlier suggestion was can, can we move that along on one track? And then parallel to that, and you know, we can have a select board member maybe work with, you know, each, do a working group and then secondarily, make sure we, we give shape or frame to this whole conversation with the, the fine points in the master plan and then pull those together. I, I just want to make sure, I want to try to come up with, and I don't have the answer. I, I want us to collectively come up with the next best steps to move both of these down, whether it's the same track or, you know, two parallel tracks. Katie, you're a governance expert and I would love your input, especially from the master plan point of view.
Thank you. So I just want to, I feel like the master plan is being invoked in.
I'm sorry.
Not all, some of them are great. Some of them are maybe a little bit farther reaching. So I just want to reset kind of where the master plan, when we came forward with recommendations, we came forward with them because as you pointed out, it was noted in the master plan. And largely the, the points that the master plan was noting on were one, the build-out impact of sewer and two, the need to address environmental. And I appreciate this, the sewer commission has really, I think all three members have said that environmental is one of the issues that they look to address. The, the concern or the issue that we raise, and I'm going to quote directly what we said in terms of our recommendations was, one, develop a comprehensive, comprehensive position for Cohasset on specific alternatives. And then two, gather additional public input. And then three, develop a point of view on land use and the economic development impact of those alternatives. And I, I think that the, the offer being made by the sewer commission to do a deep dive and dig a hole in terms of some options is fantastic. The, the issue that the master plan implementation committee has been asking to get addressed. The the issue that the master plan implementation committee has been asking to get addressed is that the intended and unintended consequences of any changes in terms of our sewer structure need to be looked at. And that is first and foremost, land use, but then depending on where the sewer goes, it can also impact environmental and maybe economic development. But Wayne, I would say economic development is like the the third and it's a distant third in comparison to environmental and land use. So I guess, Diane, to answer your question, I don't see that parallel processes work because I I think we need to understand what the alternatives are first. And I really would welcome the sewer commission, the town engineer and Warden and Curran to dig in and and give those alternatives. But then I think that we have to turn to a partnership at that point between the sewer commission, master plan or planning or whoever you want to flush out the land use. You can't do the two in parallel.
Got it.
But I think giving sewer commission some time and space to do the work that they've been committed to tonight and in the meeting before is important because we have some alternatives that we have not explored. We have a lot of information around regional sewer. But Frank, we have a deficit of information when it really relates to the specifics of what a standalone option that flows out. You know, five or 10 years for Cohasset. And and I would echo what Cory has been pressing, which is I don't think we can kind of just wander down that that path for five years and not have kind of tried to think through or anticipate some of the impacts that are out there. And that's really, the issue is been making sure that we understand those intended and unintended impacts. And it really revolves a lot around land use and planning.
Yep. Thank you. I I probably should have promoted you a half hour ago because I was taking us into a different direction. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
That was good. Wayne?
I just noted we've given the sewer commissioners who worked very hard already a lot more work to do.
Well, and 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 to be to, you know, obviously, we're we're all on this. I mean, the the big piece was I didn't want to get so far down a a process whereby we would have to rein it in because we are concerned about affordable housing or something. But we're we're at their disposal for for help. Cory and then Wayne.
This someone mentioned it, but where are we right now in in the discussions for regional with Hull? I it seems like there was some discussion early in the year and maybe that got dropped. What is currently our the status of that communication network?
Bill?
Nowhere.
Okay, what happened?
Well, they want to, they gave us an ultimatum, as John said to us, that either we sign it right away or nothing happens. We still have six years on our intermunicipal agreement. They do not want to negotiate with us. And, you know.
And and we're talking, the intermunicipal agreement is one thing. And I think Cory, what you're talking about is some of the the results from the 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 study, the regional study that we just talked about. And is that right?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, obviously, what what Bill said is that Hull's got a, and I think to Wayne's point earlier, if we're discussing this, we also have to realize that if our neighbors have their own priorities. And, you know, I'm a big fan of keeping communication lines open all the time, regardless of even if you decide, hey, we're on different sides of things, having a communication about it is never a bad thing. So I just want to know what kind of what the latest is with Hull and us, because maybe that's a discussion that we just want to keep open anyway to. But I don't know their position, so that's why.
I I would not, you know, I want to speak for myself and I'll ask John because he's he was part of the original IMFB, excuse me, the the original intermunicipal agreement. I don't want to cut my nose off despite my face on this one, but at the same time, they're charging us a a far increase over what we would have to accept or or basically eat based on what we charge our own ratepayers right now. And I think that they were open to the fact that we have some sort of equitable rate to send sewer because there's no capital. There's there. So Cory, there is a both a use, a use charge and a capital charge with respect to what Hull builds their fee upon. There's no capital charge as far as Cohasset is concerned because we send it to West Corner, goes into Hull, off it goes. So all we're doing is sending product to them, which I don't know what it costs for them to process, but it it can't be what they're charging us right now. And for them to to say they they're going to check, keep that charge, you know, that's fine. I mean, they can do whatever they want because it's their toys and they can play with them the way they want. But I think we have the right to take care again of our sewer users.
Did Chris you, Chris just popped in, so I imagine he wants to add something.
I I just wanted to 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 state the other, there's been ongoing conversations for within three years. And I the reason that all of your have gotten together is because unlike Citu and Hull, which have a little more defined management structure, where sewer and select board kind of are melded. And also, both of those committees had master plans in place and other things. When when we started these conversations, the town was still developing its master plan and still progressing. And both other committees have different experience with sewer. I mean, I think it's been pointed out that sewer was using this town as an alternative to zoning for a very long time. And that's just a fact, whether it's good or bad is irrelevant. It's what was done. And the the conversations now are different. Sewer is a tool to 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 support environmental action and and land use and economic development. It's not a, in 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 2020, it's not generally used as the way to control development. It's a tool that the town can use, but zoning is what you do. And that's why the town actually has adopted master plan for the first time in, I don't know, 20 years or more. So Cohasset was a little bit behind, honestly, as we as we started these conversations from a governance perspective, and I think the town is in a much different place today. That's I think both Hull and Citu are far are at a point now where they're looking for some degree of clarity. Whether or not Cohasset is in a place where it can give it, is that's what all of you were talking about. I do know that Citu has some significant interest and Hull has to make some decisions too. So I think they're looking for some sense of direction. And again, I'm not speaking on anyone's behalf. I'm just telling you where I think this is at this point. And either either that's an option that that's still on the table for ongoing conversation, or I think both committees of our neighbors are going to have to go in different directions. And I'm just saying that based on my experience with them and where they are in their own worlds.
So I, Bill, I'll give you a second. You know, again, what I what I want to leave this meeting with in in with absolute within a half hour at the the longest is some specific next steps. And I think that, you know, and I'd also like us to think about a timeline, like what's realistic? Because we do want to get to a point where we have that point of view, that we we have we have looked at the options that make sense, given our priorities, that are regional and are also going in on our own. And and so that, you know, maybe in, and I'm going to just throw out a a date, you know, the first week of November or whatever, that's election week, we'll probably all be a little crazy. But either before or after, like, is that a reasonable time period for the sewer commission working with Brian and whomever else has some of the raw data to kind of collect that and to and to build that decision-making grid so that we can convene again, say, you know what, this looks like an option we're very interested in pursuing, as is this one. Let's drill down a little more and get to a decision-making point, you know, by the end of November. And again, with community, we have to have community input at some point on this. If we if we put, you know, put the stake down, spit stake in the ground in terms of a specific decision or a specific path. Wayne and then Bill and sorry, Bill, like let Wayne jump the gun on you.
Okay. Speaking it. I found some great news today because one of the things I did is I went over to Citu, of course, looking for information. And I got ahold of their master plan drafts and stuff. And their master plan actually included stuff about Cohasset. And there's there's a, there's something in here that that speaks to what I think we all talked about is if you put sewer in undeveloped areas, it's going to create development. There's just no question. So there's two graphs here, and it's historical of projected household growth rates and populations. So Cohasset traditionally has about a 4% growth rate year over year. I don't know, Katie, if this if this matches with your numbers. But it reached 10% between, and that was a actual between 2000 and 2010, Cohasset's growth growth rate was about four and three quarters percent. In 2010 to 2020, it was almost 10%. And in 2020 to 25, it's projected to be a little over 4%. And then the household rates were the same. And the households increased from up to 12% in 2010 to 2020. And it was at four and a quarter percent on 2000 to 2010 and 2020 to 25. It's projected to be about four, five percent. And what happened in there represented about 320 homes was two developments at Cohasset. Toll Brothers and Avalon amounted to almost 300, both dwelling units as well as population increases, to take it from the 4% to the 10%. And to me, both of those units, both of those developments were sewered. They put a sewer plant in Toll Brothers and the sewer plant in Avalon. So if there was a sewer connection there, that type of growth would absolutely continue with the Toll Brothers type of situation. So we would, we have enough tracts of land that they can come in and put a 20,000-foot lot on any piece of ledge, any other thing there, if they have a sewer connection. So how do you, as a master planner, look at vacant land and see that that can happen and then not worry about it?
And and again, this is why we need to get a framework of of questions so we can address those. Katie, I know you've been involved in the population studies here.
So so Wayne, I I absolutely agree with your conclusion that, you know, population falls households. And if you if you look at the data, the only one that you missed was the Cook Estates as kind of the major driver. There were three that that drove a boom. That being said, we did see a re- a significant increase in kind of singletons in terms of new homes and constructions. It was running at an average rate of roughly 10 per year, and it spiked as high as, you know, 17 per year. So there's been a natural acceleration of just other, and that's driven based on the value of the land in Cohasset plus the 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 major development. So I guess what I would, I don't disagree with you that land use follows sewer. But I would say that we are, if we are going to do any expansion and we're already committed to 1B via the Mass Works Grant, if that comes through, and the sewer commissioners have said that three, section three will be sewored, we need to understand the land use impacts. And if that requires in any of the scenarios that the sewer commission studies, when you guys dig through all of the options, a satellite plant in Beechwood, there's no way that we can consider running a pipe through Beechwood with now not having a conversation with those residents. And that's 100,000 gallons in nine and 10 alone around Beechwood. So I absolutely agree with you. I'm in 100% alignment. It's just the two ends of the conversation have to be tied together. And we need to look at it and say, okay, not okay. You know, and then there's some areas that aren't as scary. I mean, to be very honest, the 1B section that's tied to the Mass Works Grant is not that scary. There's 31 parcels and of them, eight are undeveloped and six are owned by the town. So there really isn't a development impact there. That doesn't hold true in three or nine or 10. But we need to understand that and intellectually tie the two together and say, this is why we chose to do this or not, because we knew there was going to be a land use impact and we we didn't want to go there. Or I'm in agreement with you. I just don't want the two to be disconnected. And that's really the point that master plan was making is that we need to connect, we need to connect sewer to some of the other important conversations that have to go with it. And land use is probably the biggest one, but environmental and economic development. I mean, to be honest, there's some, there's some businesses in 1A that desperately need sewer because of failing SaaS pool and other septic systems. So, you know, to say that we won't look at other options, I think, again, I think we should be open to at least having the conversation, but then understanding the impacts of this conversation and having an honest and open dialogue about it.
We have anything, we are absolutely willing to do this. I don't see where you think that we're we're being.
You know, the question is just to make sure, and and, you know, maybe I framed it wrong initially, but I I just want to make sure that all the other aspects are, you know, we're that we're hanging all the other priorities of the town onto each potential proposed plan as as you all see it based on on your data or or the other way around. You know, I just want to make sure that everything is being considered and that we have some decision-making abilities as soon as possible with as much information as possible with all of the ifs, ands, and the buts and that it's taken into. So if you said we only want to do this particular plan because it addresses all of these priorities, I I just want to make sure we haven't missed anything. And again, I I want to make sure the right people are at the table. And my initial thought was, can we can we have the sewer commission kind of do call the work that they've already done that exists in the regional sewer plan that 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 you all know about? Get that all together and then we start, you know, kind of doing workflows from there based on the other priorities that we know exist in the town. But if somebody has a better way of structuring it, please, I'm begging you to suggest it. Cory, were you waving your hand?
Yeah, I just got a question. I mean, Wayne brought up the developments in town. Is Avalon connected to our sewer system or are they private?
They have a private plant.
Okay, so so I mean, them having sewer or not is is kind of.
Gallons, they're using about 18,000 and it costs a little over a million dollars.
Okay, so but that, I mean, so I think that speaks to the fact that we have to have a land use discussion that is broader than just sewer because sewer is not a sufficient tool or maybe not in the right tool to control development because it's happening anyway in ways that we may not like. The second thing is, what was it, Avalon? And then the second thing that happened that period with which is growth is the train. I think that's, you know, worth mentioning that, you know, there wasn't a train here, you know, 15 years ago. Or what is it, 12 years ago now? And that has driven.
In 1960.
Well, there was, yeah.
1960.
But but that drove, I mean, that's driven a lot of the land value increase. I mean, since I've moved here, is the train, and that is going to drive, you know, development. So, you know, I I don't think we can separate out, you know, and just say sewer-ing something caused this. I think there's a lot of pieces that connect it, including the train. And land use is a big issue and it's not just solved by sewer because we Avalon can still happen if they put in a private system. It doesn't stop that.
Can I just make one last comment? And that had to do with politically, if we go to do any project now in extending expending expanding sewer, I believe it's going to have to be at the cost of the people that are connecting to the sewer, not the town as a whole, because the precedent was sent with with the Little Harbor area that 100% of the cost of the sewer pipes, as well as the connection from the house was going to be paid. Prior to that, it was always 50/50 with all the other sewer that was put in. So 50% by the town, 50% by the user. And so I don't know how that's going to be addressed in the future.
Well, I think that's a good question because then I think that that leads us down a path of asking, if we're discussing expanding the sewer system, should people that are going to bear that cost have a stronger voice in this than not? I mean, if you are already on the sewer system, you know, are you even part of this discussion? If the if the discussion is going to be borne by people that are attaching to it, should it just be their decision then? Should we just ask South Main Street and let them, you know, be the drivers of this?
Unfortunately, it's a town meeting decision, period, full stop, you know, so.
Well, I mean, let let them drive the conversation rather than having the rest of town.
Right, certainly, they're they're.
If they're going to bear the cost, it's their voice that really is the one that matters.
But if they want it and they want to split the cost like it was previously done, the people that just paid 100% are going to probably say, no, you have to pay for it like we did. And that's.
Yeah, Paul, I'm going to go to Paul and then John and then Bill, sorry. And then I'm going to try to wrap us into a next steps.
I am, but I don't, I I was just okaying with you that I paid 100%.
Yeah, I know.
You know, some of it is the unintended consequences. If you sewer something, you may have a cleaner gulf, so it may benefit all the town members that are out just out on a boat or just swimming or diving off the rocks. So.
You'll present a town meeting then, Paul.
Yeah, it goes to town meeting.
I'm saying you're going to, you're going to make the case to the voters. John, did you have something to add? John, you're muted. I'm sorry. John, you're muted, I'm sorry.
Unmute my auto.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
My wife just peeked in a minute ago and said, stop shouting. So, I didn't, I didn't realize it was, because I've got these earphones on, I can hear so much better. The, uh, I was, I've been, we were approached to the sewer commission by residents in South Main Street who are interested in having that part of the town sewored. That's not to say everyone was, but I've had a number of conversations since then, including with the president of the Gulf River Association, which is a group of citizens that have gotten together to talk about issues with the Gulf. And they have been very positively inclined, but we have been kind of stalled out while these kinds of discussions are going on and, and renewing those earlier conversations. We have also done a study, and Bill alluded to it, as part of the things we'll bring forth as to what it would cost to do South Main Street. So we, we're going to have those numbers updated, but it was done within the last year and a half. So we'll have some good hard numbers that will be relatable to everyone who's of interest.
So about an hour ago, Bill proposed a, that the sewer commission, working with Woodard and Curran, capacity as your plan operators, Bill, or?
No, I, I would say to basically selectively and minimally mine the data that they have already prepared, so that we don't want to incur a major cost.
Include, yeah, including the data and options presented in the regional sewer study.
Yeah, where they're applicable to the town of Cohasset, yes.
And, and you would basically chart kind of a, a, a white paper with the various issues, the, um, the short and short-term, long-term priorities of the town that different options might present, and then some costs?
Yes, and then, you know, we may have some, some crazy ideas of how we could do something on a regional basis. And we may have some ideas of where we could put a, a sort of small mini plant somewhere that would help areas where in, in Cohasset needs to be sewed, for instance. So I think we would put as much as we possibly can into a kind of a short brief that says, this is where we think the state of sewer is in the, in the town of Cohasset. What we could do in the future, what we could do in a potential regional sewer, and what we could do with other towns. And, and to that point, I have to, Lisa, our administrator, gave me a text a minute, or a couple of minutes ago, basically saying, reminding me, is that every time the town of Hull increases their rates for the populace, our rates include, increases as well. So that's something we have to deal with. It's contractually obligated. And those are the things we would have to deal with, with them. But hopefully, I answered your question.
How, how quickly could you, through meetings, pull together that kind of a document?
I would think by the, I mean, I would think if you're saying in, you know, the end of the month of October, I think we could certainly do that.
Okay, the next question is, how do we overlay the issues that we have as a select board members and, you know, committee appointee, appointing authority and our various committees, including master plan implementation? You know, how do we, do we wait for that and then kind of overlay our ideas? And then try to get, set up another meeting for like November tenth, or whatever random date around that time period we can to, to, to drill in and start making some decisions?
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, we have to, we, you know, we have to, we have to determine how deep the pool is before we can decide whether we want to dive in or not. So, um, my opinion. And I think that we needed, like, because of the, the expertise of the board and then the others around us, we can give a, we can paint a very good picture of what we think could happen, what it would cost. You know, again, going back to the destruction of the town, all the other things that go on, and then we would present it to the board, who can then disseminate it to other, other groups.
I'm going to go to Corey and then Katie, but, but in that, your, your white paper would also include some of the suggested options in the, in the regional plan, because we need them, we need to compare them.
Possibly, I mean, possibly, I, I, I don't, I think we would open up another hour or two of, of conversation if I got into that, but I think possibly. I think, again, we want to look at what's going to happen with Cohasset first, and then how we could intermingle ourselves with other towns.
Want to figure out the best way to.
My opinion of.
To address our priority needs through whatever means we can. And we, so we can look at the options and what issues they do address. Corey and then Katie.
Yes, but we would use the Woodard and Curran Regional Plan to augment what we may think about doing X, Y, and Z. So.
So, so I, I, I'm wondering if, if we should actually do, you know, I think this has been shut down, but reintroduce the idea of just parallel processes, where we have two groups that are, have different goals for, I think it's tough in one white paper to boil all this down and make an argument that is, you know, all encompassing. And I think we need to have multiple tracks that we can kind of relay against each other. So I think separating those two, having a, a group that is just re-engaging Hull, you know, bringing those discussions a little bit forward to see how far we can get before we throw it out. And then I want to ask about the Woodard and Curran, because, I mean, I know they run a plant, but they did our regional, the regional proposal as well. So I've got a little bit in the back of my head saying, I'm not sure I want to go to them for a local study. I think Wayne mentioned earlier that there was somebody that has done working class before that you were thinking about doing a local study with. That seems to make more sense to me, because we're separating out just a little bit of institutional bias there.
My, my understanding is, and Bill and Wayne can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, it's not so much like we're starting any kind of a new study, but that Woodard and Curran has, and it, and it was a different arm, it's not the same people that are doing the operations, but that, the data, most of the data the sewer commissioners are talking about exists already. It's just a matter of, of pulling it and getting it into a, a, kind of an understandable shape based on what they think are some of the options we have.
So, so the report that, that, that has been done, was done for the purposes of regional. We haven't done the same thing with Woodward and Curran to do a local study. So we could go to them, and the sewer commissions, you guys are comfortable going to them for that information?
In, in a very minimalistic way. You know, we are, you know, full disclosure, in my own opinion, we're, at least I am very cognizant of the fact that some, uh, that the populace may be thinking that there might be a, I can't even think of the word at this.
Bias?
Yeah, it would, no, 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 no. But we have interest that we have Woodard and Curran running Hull, Woodard and Curran wanting, running Cohasset, and they're doing a regional study. And as Chris had told me two weeks ago, it was basically, that, that whole contract was based on the, on the fact that Hull had hired them to do a study that sort of merged into Cohasset, merged into Situate, and was paid for by a state grant. So there really wasn't any conflict of interest. However, I want to, again, my opinion, I want to, I want to make sure that we don't go that route. I want to take the data that we've already paid for, the right data, and then we bring it in, and we then look at it as a board and as a group, along, along with our engineer, with Brian, and then say, okay, this is what we can do, this is what the costs are going to be, you know, based on some of the, the criteria that I threw up, and that was purely a mind dump, that we say, look, this is what we think can happen, these are the possibilities that are out there, this is what it's going to cost, this is going to take in time, disruption, you know, whatever. And then, you know, we'll give it to the board, and you guys decide, okay, well, what do we now want to do with it?
I mean, I found the, the, the regional report to be a little bit light on the Cohasset focus of it. I mean, so it's, again, I'm deferring to you, you feel like there was enough in that report to, to make a, a good projection?
I've not said that, no. No, I've not said that.
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Yeah, I think that report looked at a regional study to clean up the Gulf, but it also put, in my opinion, and I'll ask Wayne and John to look at it, a burden on the town of Cohasset to build a thirty-inch pipe from, you know, basically border street all the way to Hull.
Okay, but you, but outside of that, you think Woodward and Curran has enough information that, to, to give you what you need? I'm just.
Uh, for what we want, I think they do, and we can augment that with other resources, yes.
Right, and again, as we go further down this path, you know, there's likely going to have to be some trigger points where we do get more information or more specific studies. I'm going to, I'm going to jump to Jack, just because he's a select board member, and then Katie, if you want to chime in.
Yeah, thank you. I think, well, first of all, to Corey's point, I think it's very clear, we looked at a study, it says it's a regional study. So that's what they were studying, that's what they said they were studying, that's what they granted to do. It's certainly not unreasonable to, to, to suggest that perhaps that a Cohasset-centric study about what Cohasset can do is what's needed, that's the informational gap. And I think the way Bill has suggested that that be dealt with for the study makes imminent sense, and we should just get that done, and the two of them. So I think, Corey, we will have those two separate paths. And, you know, judging from the quality of the information that we have gotten from our sewer board, I think they're doing a very good job, and they're doing exactly what they're doing, said they would do, which is giving us and the town factual information to do that. So I think they ought to just go forward to do that, and we're done, move on. Move on, but I.
Just like that.
Katie, and then it's getting late.
Okay, Katie, and then any, then I'll wrap it up.
So I guess my only question to, you know, Diane and, and to everyone is, I feel like we're rushing the timeline, to be honest. Like, I feel like you're pushing for end of October, early November, and realistically, I think once, once this report is produced, it's going to result in some conversations and aren't going to be neatly tied up in a bow within a week or two. And so I, I want to be very clear and circle back to a point that Corey made. I think we need to be clear with Hull and Situate that they've just got to wait a little bit. And we need to put a pause button for, you call it, three, six months, whatever it is, until we know what we want in Cohasset. And I'm not embarrassed saying that publicly, but I think, you're sitting here today, I don't see this being all wrapped up by November, I really don't.
I agree.
Fair enough, and I, I literally was making dates up. I, I, I want other people that know more than I do about this process.
But because, because it's going to take a little bit longer, I think we have to do the right thing and turn to Hull and Situate and say, we're, we're calling a timeout, and it's an important timeout for us, because we need to know what the Cohasset's point of view is. And we need three, six months, whatever it is, to come up with that.
And, and we are, we are speaking for Cohasset, Hull doesn't, Situate doesn't, we may love, like the towns, whatever. But we're speaking for Cohasset, and there, they should not be driving the decisions of Cohasset.
And they definitely need to, need to work with us. You know, that's, that, that would be a huge point.
They need us more than.
Part of the discussion, right, is to really make this gap happen. You know, obviously, we're here, but I think all sides need to, you know, because I, I, I think Hull's probably, you know, got stuff that they're not telling us either, it's a negotiation. So let's bridge, let's bridge the gap.
Well, and, and, and to Katie's point, I mean, they've, they've been waiting for us to give an answer, and we're not prepared to give them an answer. So I think that's Chris's responsibility as a, as, by direction of, of the board, that, you know, we need to just communicate that, um, we need time to do this right. We absolutely, positively want to do this right, and if it takes three weeks or three years, it's, and hopefully somewhere in between, we'll get there. So I'm, I'm not bound to any timeline. To Katie's point, I think just given everything going on in the, in, in our worlds, personally and professionally, and as, as volunteers for the town, the timeline is probably closer to three months than, you know, November tenth. But again, I was, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, like, at what point can we make our next, can we set the next timeline for deliverables of something?
Whenever Bill can, whenever Bill can get it done, and then we'll meet again, decide where we're going to go.
I'm with Jack on this one, where I don't think you can.
Let it go.
I, I don't think you can necessarily define phase two until you know what the deep dive and the hole is that gets dug by the sewer commission in terms of options.
Okay, so is, is everybody comfortable? I, I work for somebody that makes me Gantt chart and RACI column everything I do on a daily basis. So I'm sorry if I'm pushing on deadlines, but if, if, you know, if everybody's okay with just sort of leaving it to a date uncertain at this point, but sometime, you know, within the next couple of months, whatever you need to, and you might, sewer commissioners decide you really do need to, you know, hire whatever, a consultant to come in and pull together some information. I don't know, but I want to give you the right amount of time, but I, again, I want to be, I want to make sure that we have a commitment to, to, to getting to cer- certain decision-making points. Bill?
I, I, you know, again, my, my time estimate was based on what I think it could do. I haven't talked to anybody yet as to what, what the potential permutations of this.
But you're comfortable with just leaving it kind of open for right now, and we'll just stay in touch?
No, I'm not. I would rather set a date so that says, yeah, we're going to get it done at this date so we can deliver it to you, so that then you can deal with it. I mean, uh, open dates are open dates, and we, you know, I, I don't want to tell you that we'll get it done next June. I'd rather say, okay, let's get it done, give ourselves thirty, forty-five days, and I'll get back to the board and say, well, we can do that after I talk to the sewer board. And then we do it that way.
Chris, you want to weigh in?
No, 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 I was just following up. I, I think that I agree that with Bill, it's setting some kind of a date, at the same time, it may just be a check-in point, right? And say, well, we need to do more, you know? Because I, I agree that this is a critical, you, you need, you all need to have all the information, you need to make the right decision for Cohasset. So you don't want to short shrift that, that analysis. And it's also, this is a tough time to be, if it turns out we have sources too, by the way, we need to pull that together, so.
Right.
And I, you know, Brian is, Brian's can be right at the table. At the same token, you know, Brian has, you know, regular Cohasset stuff to do every day too, so.
Brian, you got a ride herd on these deadlines.
So we want to make sure it's done the right way, and, and there's enough resources, so.
Okay, so, but Corey has his hand up, and then we'll, Bill, I'm going to ask you for whatever that, like, check-in date would be.
I mean, concurrently, I, I would like to, you know, have maybe our board or some, some part of Cohasset reach out to Hull and just see where their conversation is, and maybe have a joint conversation with them, just, you know, to keep the door open. I don't want to slam a door before we're ready for that. And I just, I don't want to leave them hanging for another sixty days, not, not leave them hanging, but I don't want to ignore a, a possible solution.
Absolutely. If, I think the appropriate thing is, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the appropriate thing is, is for the board to direct the town manager to just communicate to, to the, to towns, because two of them are, are partners in this inquiry. And just to communicate to them that we, we are asking for a number of months' time, because we really want to, we're resetting a lot of information, and we want to get, take, take stock of what's important for the town of Cohasset, and what, what's going to meet our needs, and, you know, and we'll get back to them. We'll keep them informed. But many of them are on this call, by the way, so they're watching this meeting, so.
Tell them to lay, lay their deal on the table for us to look at.
They have.
I think it's, I think it's less deal-making right now, and that's the, that's the, the point I want to drive home. It's less of a deal-making situation right now, as, as there are potential partners. We're going to ask them to wait, we need to take stock of our priorities and map out a plan that we're all comfortable with.
Yep.
Bill?
Diane, to answer your question, if we said the eighteenth of November for the sewer board and the group to give you a report, would that be appropriate? And if we get something done beforehand, we get a bonus, that kind of thing?
Absolutely. What do you want? Yeah, yeah. Let's just set that date as a date for our next conversation, which we will have some kind of framework of if, then's.
We might want to do an update in October, maybe towards the end, so we can give you like an update as to how our study is going. But again, I think we have to put, these things usually get done in the two weeks prior to when the due date is. So I'd rather, I'd rather give a date, and then we say, okay, fine, we're going to get done.
Absolutely, and you're always welcome to reach out and get on our agenda for updates. And we'll, you know, there's a lot of planning, working groups going on this fall. There's a lot of initiatives, each of, of the select board members are working with various working groups. So we're going to start getting into that, and, and that's actually going to help us, help inform every decision we're going to make going forward. us, help inform every decision we're going to make going forward because it's really pulling, pulling in all the priorities of the community in, in various aspects. So let's say that November, what did you say, 19th?
I think it was the 18th.
Sort of an outside deadline and we'll just keep in touch?
Very good.
Is everybody comfortable with that? Does anybody have any last minute statements, questions?
No.
All right. Does everybody feel good? We're getting places. Carrie?
No, I feel good about the discussion. I, I really agree with Bill though. I think we need to keep the momentum going. I think starting these conversations has been really important and continually doing check-ins matters a lot. So I say, keep the momentum going rather than just waiting a lot of months before communicating about this again.
Okay.
In my considered opinion, we should consider a motion to adjourn.
Did you just make that?
Yes, I did.
Love it. Is there a second?
Do we have to let sewer commission go first?
Because that's.
No.
Oh no, we'll follow your lead. Absolutely.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just going to shut the meeting down and you won't even have a vote.
I got my finger on the kill button already. So.
Select board, we have a, a motion and a second. Yep. All those in favor, buy a roll call, please.
Jack, rate an eye.
Corey Evans, eye.
Diane Kennedy, eye.
Paul Schubert, eye.
Harry Thompson, eye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sewer, you guys need to adjourn.
I move the sewer commission to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.